Supervisor, before I follow the planning commission order, I'd ask Mr. Jeff Robertson to be able to lead us on word break.
Let's pray, y'all. Dear Lord, we're grateful for the day that you've given us to serve you. We're grateful for the rain that you blessed us with this evening. Dear Lord, just ask us, should we feel your presence tonight? Dear Lord, as we go about doing the, taking care of the business of the community, dear Lord, just fill us with wisdom and fill us with concern for our neighbors and keep everybody safe as they leave this place tonight and they travel home. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. I want to call the planning commission work session together for June 22.
I'd like to call the board of supervisors meeting to order for this joint work session. Can I get a move?
Show move.
It's been moved in second that we called this meeting to order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pope normally has a roll call for us. He's not here. Huh? You've got them all written down?
Yeah, we got it.
That's wonderful. You gave me an agenda, Treva, and I fumbled around here and lost it. Okay. The proposed business tonight is the amendments to the comp plan. Item number three, is this when the Berkeley group takes over? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be here. See if I can get this thing to scroll like it did. Scrolled, but when I tested it earlier, now I didn't want to. I thought par for the course. There we go. Now everybody else can see the agenda. I'm Darren Coffey with the Berkeley Group. This is Aaron Berry Hill, also with the Berkeley Group. Aaron is on our solar team, but he's also helping lead y'all's comprehensive plan effort. So he's here to listen and to help support these efforts down the road. It's a pleasure to be back before you. It's been a while. It's good to see everybody's faces, or part of your faces, anyway. I think I know most of you, and it's a real honor to be here today. What I would like to do to kick this off is to just remind everybody of where the planning commission was in April. You had a public hearing to talk about a lot of the things that are on the agenda here this evening. If we end up landing in that arena and there's consensus that we can see forming this evening, then the planning commission could conceivably make a recommendation along those lines and move that recommendation forward to the board. The board would then have their public hearing on those recommendations at some point in the future, presumably next month, and then they would take action on the planning commission's recommendation. If we land somewhere else this evening, other than what was discussed at the public hearing in April, then presumably the planning commission would be directed to act on that, and then you would have another public hearing at your next available meeting, make a recommendation, and that would go to the board. So just as a matter of process in my mind, that's what we're looking at here. I also know that the board has had some conversations regarding solar energy facilities, and so I think what I'd like to do this evening, as chairman, if it's okay with you, is hear from the board first to see what y'all are thinking. Do you want to pick the ball up where the planning commission kind of left it with their public hearing in April? Or do you have other thoughts that you would like to discuss first, since you are the governing body?
Well, I think what we tasked them, I think our task was for the planning commission to come back and make a recommendation to us.
Okay. All right. So let's start there. What was discussed in April was taking some of the guidelines that are in the comprehensive plan and putting those in the zoning ordinance. Now, as one kind of housekeeping item, what was recommended was to take it out of the comp plan and to put it into the zoning ordinance. I would not recommend taking it out of the comp plan, but I would recommend also including them in the zoning ordinance. In other words, your comprehensive plan should directly support, to the extent that it can, your zoning ordinance. So if your zoning ordinance is ever challenged, no matter what those overarching metrics are, the comp plan, it's basically implementing what the comp plan says too. So there's no reason to take one out and put it in the other. You can have them in both places, and that would be the one housekeeping item that I would recommend that would be different from what was discussed in April.
Darren, could you explain how they would be different by being located in the comp plan? How they, how we would handle them differently? How would we enforce them differently by being in the zoning ordinance also?
So right now, when you have the distance, and I have on the agenda that the distance between facilities is currently two miles, it's actually 1.5. So I had to fact check myself. I'm wrong. I put the agenda together. It's my error. It's actually 1.5 miles. Distance from municipal boundaries is currently a mile or greater. Those are in the comp plans, and those are guidelines. And so the way it's been working is an applicant will submit their 2232 application to see if it's in conformance with the comp plan, and then you use those metrics to decide whether you feel that it's good enough or not. But it's a guide, and there are several examples of facilities that have been approved, both at the 2232 level and ultimately at the special use permit level, where they didn't meet those guidelines. And that's okay, because they're just guidelines. But if you say, "We actually want to be strict about it, so we want those guidelines to be put into the conference, to be put into the zoning ordinance," now it's a regulation. And Lynn would take a ruler and measure from property line to property line to make sure that those minimums were met. If they weren't, then it's not, you can't accept the application. So it's taking what the county has said was aspirational, and it's making it operational, if that makes sense. And so, and one of the things that I think has driven this is that the aspirational hasn't been achieved, the applications keep coming in, there's the anticipation that there are going to be more coming in, and there seems to be a desire to kind of tighten things up a little bit and make it more clear and easier for staff to implement and for applicants to know what they have to follow. So that's what we were dealing with, with the comprehensive plan side of things. Now, for the zoning ordinance side of things, they were talking about raising the minimum from, I believe it's two megawatts, I think. It might be one, but I think it's two to five. Basically, what that's saying is there's a push from the state and from the industry to have more community scale solar facilities, which are smaller, which are less than five megawatts. And those facilities are not eligible for revenue share or any other type of extra revenue generating potential. They take as much time to process, but don't have some of the financial benefits that, you know, greater than five megawatts would have. And so the policy decision there would be, you know, these facilities would have to meet all of these criteria anyway, but if they were approved, then they'd be all over the place, and they wouldn't be that big, and we wouldn't generate a revenue stream from them from any of the things that were approved last July 1st. So I'm deriving from the staff report that was written and from the conversations that they've had, that that's one of the drivers for increasing that minimum size from where it's at to five. It would have to be greater than five.
Convert the five megawatt to acreage?
It would be approximately 40 to 50 acre, a 40 to 50 acre site.
So less than 40, 50 acre site would not be eligible?
Right.
But just to make a point of clarification, we only allow solar facilities in an A1 zone, so they wouldn't be everywhere.
Correct.
Correct.
Everywhere within the allowable district.
Right. So currently, the policy says that anything over one megawatt is, we consider it utility scale solar, and it's only allowed in an A1 district only with the issuance of a special use permit. So I think there's this misnomer, and I'm not really sure how it got started. I think a lot of people started calling the county office inquiring because they were getting flyers because Mecklenburg has contracted with EDF Renewables, saying that if anybody has 25 to 50 acres of land and you want to put solar on it, you can't. Well, you can't, because it has to be in an A1 zone, and it has to get a special use permit. So I think, for whatever reason, maybe people didn't understand what the policy was, so they were saying, "Oh, well, we're going to have solar everywhere." And that's not the case.
Thank you for that clarification. There's a lot of A1, but you're right, it's not everywhere. So I appreciate that. The other metrics that were talked about to include in the zoning ordinance would be that facilities would have to be under 1,000 acres. So you'd be talking about, you know, 100 megawatt facilities or less, with a maximum panel coverage of 75%, which is actually, you know, pretty generous. In a lot of other communities where we work, it's 60 or 65%. Then locating within one mile of existing transmission lines, this used to be something that the industry kind of did anyway, and I think y'all saw that initially with some of your earlier applications, but more and more, we do see them using gentile lines, and I know you've seen that on at least one of your applications, that go for two, three or more miles. And so what this is saying is, you know, you prefer not to have that, and it would not be permitted if it was in the zoning ordinance. And then there was some discussion also, and it was actually proposed as the zoning text amendment, to have it be a five mile separation between approved utility scale solar facilities instead of the current one and a half mile facility separation. And I know from reading the public hearing comments, the industry really kind of wants to leave things the way it is. Some citizens want to ban it, some citizens approve of the amendments that have been discussed. There was a lot of concern, where there was concern, about five miles being too far. I would just say that in my experience, that would be a high number, but if it's currently one and a half, then increasing that to two and a half or three might be more acceptable, more amenable, and still achieve the objective of not having these facilities clustered. The original idea behind keeping them separate was so that you didn't have a 500-megawatt facility next to a 500-megawatt facility next to a 500-megawatt facility, and all of a sudden, you've got, you know, all of these thousands of acres, you know, under panel in a certain geography within A1 that then perhaps dominates that area. So the driver behind all of these things is to mitigate any potential adverse impact of these facilities, wherever they end up being located, if they are approved. And so that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I mean, I think the planning commission did a good job in their discussion in April. They did not make a recommendation at the time, because I think they thought that they were going to be meeting with the board in a joint work session a week later, and that was unable to happen, and so here we are. So I do think they did what the board asked them to do, and here we are in June, and if we can come to some consensus, get some feedback from the board, have the planning commission decide on how they feel about what was discussed in April and what is discussed this evening, then we can move this ball forward in some form or fashion.
Any discussion from any of the planning commission on this project?
Well, I for one don't think that we need to put any of those that are on the screen now in the zoning ordinance, that we need to leave it the way it is. We were just here two years ago and thoroughly reviewed everything and came up with our plan, and I'm really not at all sure still why we had the meeting in April and what was the driving force behind changing it, because we have not even heard a solar case, you know, I'm not sure when. Fountain Creek Solar was the last one that got approved, you know, during, after we started having meetings after the pandemic. We haven't heard any others. We deferred one, because really, we didn't hear the solar portion of it. It was a rezoning case. So again, I'm not really sure what the premise is behind needing to change it, and I certainly don't agree with the five mile separation. Greensville County is only 295 square miles. That is tiny. In comparison to Southampton, our neighbor, is 600 square miles. We are half of that. Five miles in any area of the county, in some areas of the county will put you in other counties, puts you in the city. For instance, my area of the county, five miles to the north is going to put you in Sussex. Five miles to the east puts you, five miles to the west puts you in Brunswick. Five miles to the east puts you in Jarrett. Five miles south, you're in the city. So it pretty much prohibits anything in that area of the county. And again, I have no idea where the five miles came from. I've never seen that. I've tried to research this myself. I've never seen anything that restrictive. Again, we could sit here all day and talk about, should it be 1,500 acres or 800 acres? And at the end of the day, what have we accomplished? Because we could miss out on a good project if the project were 1,200 acres. Or, you know, we could deny a project, you know, that was, or we could approve a project that was smaller that, you know, we shouldn't have because we're trying to meet some artificial number. If we hear every case, we can vote it up, we can vote it down, we can listen to it. I think that we are cutting off our nose despite our face when we put all of these arbitrary restrictions that are just pulled out of the air. I don't see the need for it. I don't see the need for changing it. I pretty much think at our last public hearing, I think we had one person that was against it, and everyone else spoke, wanted to leave it the same. Again, Darren is right. We didn't make a decision because we thought we were going to have a meeting a week later, but of course, that didn't happen. Now we're down the road and still haven't had a decision.
Different reason.
Thank you, Ms. White.
That we need to revisit this again. When we did Fountain Creek, they were in nearly, everything we did on the comprehensive plan, they was in violation of it. 600 feet away, we said one and a half mile. They were 600 feet away. And when I looked at everything that we was doing right there, I thought when we spent all that time putting the comprehensive plan together, that that would be something we would follow. But when we came to the first time of Fountain Creek, this board, the planning commission board, ignored all of the stuff we put together. So that's why we're sitting back here tonight, for that reason. We cannot, I'm talking. We cannot sit up here and put guidelines together, and every time, this planning commission, I've been standing with this planning commission for almost three years, and all we ever do is say yes to everything. We put this in place for guidelines, and I was hoping and expecting that we would respect the guidelines we put in place, and this board has never done that.
Well, guess what, Mr. Kane? Back in December, Striped Bath Solar, it wants to put a solar farm across from your house, and I said no, that I don't think that we should rezone it, and I said, "No, I don't think we should put it there," but it meets every one of these criteria, every one of them. But I don't think that it should be there. I'm not here to approve every solar project. I am here to approve a good solar project.
You asked why we were back here, and that's my explanation back to you.
Well, I don't buy that explanation.
Well, I don't have to buy yours either.
Well, don't. But if you, if we can actually sit here and say that we are going to make a law and say that a solar farm has to be under 1,000 acres, and we have a solar farm that is at 1,100 acres, we are automatically going to deny it. We're not going to hear about it. It doesn't matter whether it's going to bring revenue to the county or not. You and the other board members in December passed a revenue share agreement. I don't know why you went to the trouble of doing that if you didn't want to look at solar projects coming to the county. That will give the county $1,400 per megawatt per year for the life of the project. That is nothing to sneeze at.
Just one point of clarification, and maybe I misheard you, and if I did, I apologize. If an application comes in that were 1,200, it wouldn't be able to be acted on, it just wouldn't be accepted as an application. If it didn't, if these metrics are in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Staff would not accept the application.
Right. So we will never hear it.
The other, the other kind of thing that I meant to point out earlier that has changed since last July 1st, above and beyond when we first put these regulations in, is that the 2232 agreement, the 2232 review process was kind of a check and balance part of the process going in. And the thought would be that that's where the guidelines would be enforced, and then projects would either move forward or not accordingly. With the siting agreement provision in state code, if you agree to do a siting agreement in addition to the revenue share, then the 2232 process is waived. So another argument, another reason to put some or all of the metrics in the comprehensive plan in the zoning ordinance, is that that way, they're going to be enforced as regulations, regardless of whether there's a 2232 review process or not. And then for projects that meet this criteria, it then enters the special use permit process, which is still discretionary, which still evaluates whether the location is appropriate or not, it has adequate buffers, et cetera. It still could be denied, but if it were approved, then it would not only get that $1,400 per megawatt per revenue share, it would also get whatever other revenue was tied to the site plan agreement. And if it came in that way, there would be no 2232 process, which kind of lightens the planning commission's burden a little bit. So those are some things that have changed in terms of the political landscape and the revenue landscape since, you know, these land use policies and regulations were first evaluated by the county.
But the board of supervisors has not decided whether they want to entertain a siting agreement or not.
And that may very well be the case, but my understanding is what the board of supervisors did do was in December, as a body, they instructed staff to do a study, which staff did, and then as a result of that study, I think that's where these recommendations came from, from staff, and those were presented to the planning commission, which is what you held your public hearing on. And if that process is incorrect, please correct me.
No, that's correct.
Because I wasn't here.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And so here we are, and it's just a matter of, you know, maybe we can hear from some people we haven't heard from and try to get everybody's input and then see where we land.
Just as a, just a point of clarification, as best I remember, and some of you guys could correct me, I think the one that got approved with only 600 feet had been approved previously, before we set any parameters at all. It had gotten approved one time, and then we kind of changed the rules, and they came back. And that's as I remember, that one got approved with only 600 feet between them.
Are you asking from the planning commission, from the board of supervisors, for approval?
Well, yes, the planning commission approved it with that, knowing full well it was only 600 feet.
From the planning commission?
Yes, we approved it. We sure did. And that was after we had voted, as I recall, for the mile and a half. But I think the feeling was that they had already approved, it had been approved one time, under the guidelines when we had no guidelines at all. And that's the way I remember it happening, and I could be...
I don't personally remember Fountain Creek ever being approved until after we had the comprehensive plan of solar in place, not Fountain Creek.
I thought Fountain Creek had been approved before we had that, but that's...
I know there was an application that was either denied or withdrawn.
It was denied, but it never was approved. Fountain Creek was denied the first time.
The planning commission approved it, as I remember.
Yeah, the planning commission, the board denied it.
But it did come back, and when it came back, it was approved. But it was not successful the first go around in some form or fashion. It wasn't approved, but then when it came back, it was approved.
And in the meantime, we had put in some guidelines that we thought was about a mile and a half, and it wasn't up here.
Yeah, I don't remember the sequencing. I don't remember if these regular, I don't remember if these guidelines were in place at the time or not, but if they were, they were still guidelines and therefore...
And I can tell you, they were, they were in place.
They were, again, it was the comprehensive plan, just as it's written today, was the same comprehensive plan that was in effect when Fountain Creek got approved. I believe that it got approved in, the final vote was in November.
Yeah, they made adjustments to their...
But again, it was first denied, and then they had to resubmit. So, I mean, the process has been going on before I ever even got on the planning commission with that particular project.
The mile and a half, it's only a guideline. Is that correct?
That's the way it's written now, is only a guideline. But what, you know, they're proposing tonight is that it be, you know, put into the zoning ordinance, so therefore, you would have to follow it.
And specifically, what was proposed was that it increase to a five mile separation and be included in the zoning ordinance. And so it's, to me, that particular item is almost a twofold question. A, do you want to include it in the zoning ordinance? And B, if so, does it stay at 1.5 miles, or does it increase to something else?
I think it should be an option, because we could have a perfectly good project right next to another one, and if we are over that, you know, you can't use it. I feel we should, if it's convenient to the gentile line, then we should be able to use that. So I don't think that should be solid.
I agree with you, Mr. Brown, because again, we are already saying that they need to be as close to a transmission line as possible, so therefore, we're contradicting ourselves. You know, if it's got to be close to a transmission line, then the projects are going to be, you know, relatively in the same general area, because they have to be. That's how the electricity moves. So it's just, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I agree with you.
So that's another issue, and maybe what we should do is kind of go down issue by issue and have people be able to talk about it, or just take a straw poll, and just raise yes or no, raise your hand, and then we can see where we land. Y'all want to do it that way, because the distance within a transmission line is a separate, you know, it's a separate metric. And so it could be that none of the things in the comp plan move to the zoning ordinance, or it could be that some of them do, but some of them don't. Anything that the planning commission considered in April that might be acted on by the planning commission tonight would be fair game, as long as we're not making anything more strict than what was proposed. But if we're, if we're taking some combination or permutation, and it's less strict than what was proposed, then we're still good to go, and it could be acted on and forwarded to the board.
The reason, the reason we're going through all of this now, and Mr. Pope's not here, unfortunately, he's still under the weather, but he was getting bombarded with, with things, with calls and questions about it. So that was one of the reasons I know he proposed increasing the size of some things and putting some distances on there. And Treva may be able to add some of it too. I'm not sure how much she's been involved with it. But that's why we had actually postponed the last meeting, because he was not able to hear to give his input on it.
Correct. And I know, you know, these recommendations have been forwarded by staff as a result of the study that the board requested, and then a public hearing was held on them, and then the planning commission, their next step would be, you know, to make a recommendation on those and forward it to the board. But since we're all here together, if we can come to a consensus between the board and the planning commission, then that makes it for a smoother process for the board, once they get the planning commission's recommendation. Now, that may or may not be feasible, that may or may not happen.
But I'll tell you, I mean, I think it's consensus of the board. We won't take action on it tonight.
No, no, you would have to have a public hearing. Yeah, absolutely. And the planning commission does... And the planning commission doesn't have to take any action tonight. I just wanted to point out that if it's within the construct of what was discussed at the public hearing, you could.
Right, I understand. You know, Lynn may, maybe the planning commission, I mean, sorry, maybe the, um, planning staff was getting bombarded. Well, you know, I'm sorry, but their job is to, um, hear, that their job is to answer the phone. Their job is to listen. You know, Greensville County hasn't, I would say, Mr. Robinson and the rest of you could speak. I know personally, these past thirty-some years, this planning commission met four times a year. Is that about right?
About right.
About right, four times a year. Do you know why? Because nobody was knocking on Greensville's door to do business. They would have loved to have met every month. And for the past year, not, of course, not last year, but in 2019, we were meeting every month. Sometimes we were meeting twice a month. I look at that as a good thing. I look as the phone ringing and staff having to deal with it as a good thing. Maybe the answer is we need to hire some help in the planning department, not to write restrictive regulations so that we're closing our door to business. That's, you know, my answer to, you know, I'm sorry that they were feeling overwhelmed. Maybe they felt like, um, things are confusing. Solar can be a little bit confusing because it's new to Greensville County. People have got to learn what's going on. But, um, that's just something that they're going to have to work through, in my opinion. I, I, I welcome the fact that, that people are interested in doing business in Greensville.
Will you explain it one more time, the advantage? If there is an advantage to the county for having it in the zoning ordinance? Say, say if we decide, or this body decides to recommend to the county to leave it as is, but to put that in the zoning, then what, what does that advantage?
So if you, if you zoom out a bit, and you go back to the, the first question that's on here, utility scale solar facilities as a use. You know, when we started down this road, uh, three years ago, it was not addressed in the comprehensive plan in any, any form or fashion.
Right.
And so one of the questions that we had to ask, that I was just getting ready to circle back to tonight, is, you know, we need to answer the question, should it be an allowable use or not? The answer that we came to in 2019 was yes. And so if the answer is yes, and you add text into the comp plan acknowledging that, you know, it's an allowable use, and then setting forth the policies under which you would prefer to see it. Now, the idea is that you will implement those policies through your zoning ordinance, through your zoning regulations. But there was not a desire on the part of the majority of the planning commission or the majority of the board to take some of the guidelines and policies in the plan that we set forth and put them in the zoning ordinance. Because it would be too restrictive and could deter, uh, good utility scale solar applications with a, a broad brush without considering them individually. Now, we're three years down the road, the county has approved a fair number of facilities, it denied a few facilities, you've got a little bit, you've cut your teeth on them. And when we first were doing this, we were like, what the heck is this? This is not, not a repair shop. This is something totally different. But now you've had experience with them. So the question is, do they remain an allowable use in the county? And if so, are the policies that are in the comp plan being effectively implemented by the zoning ordinance? And if the answer is no, then it's a shorter conversation. If the answer is yes, we still want it to be an allowable use, but no, some or all of these policies have not been implemented effectively by the zoning ordinance. That would be why you would want to then mirror them in the zoning ordinance. And then you can also evaluate the mile and a half standard, the less than a mile standard, the mile away from a municipal boundary standard, and say, are they still sufficient, or do they need to be adjusted? And then you either leave it, you know, you take everything out and say, we're not doing it anymore. You leave it as it is, or you make fine tuning adjustments. And, you know, the planning commission has the authority to recommend any of those things, and the board has the authority to ultimately make a final decision on any of those things. And so to me, the hope tonight is, is that based on where we've been and where we're at, we can come to a consensus on where we want to go as a county in terms of the vision and goals, all of the things you're talking about as part of your comprehensive plan process. But tonight, it's just relative to this one issue of utility scale solar land use.
I, I don't know if you guys, you know, have read it recently, but we have an eight-page solar ordinance. And one of the things that we worked on in, uh, 2019 was proper setbacks. We worked on a decommissioning plan. We have a ton of criteria in here, um, that if a solar farm gets approved, it has to do a lot of things, and it's pretty comprehensive. Therefore, by having this, we have weeded out any solar facility that is not, um, you know, that, that, that doesn't have the backing to be able to actually have a facility, that, that can't put up a bond, that can't decommission it, so that we get serious candidates. So the ones that we have are not just fly-by-night people that want to put up a solar farm. If they've read the ordinance and they can meet it, then they're serious. So we should give them serious consideration. I, I think that that's where we need to spend our time. I, I'm all for tightening up any type of buffer or any kind of screening or anything like that to make the project desirable to our neighborhood so that it doesn't feel like it's encroaching on a neighbor. I'm all for that. I, I, I think we need to, we, we can add back. But sitting here and wasting our time talking about a thousand acres and five miles, and my mind is pointless.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Does anybody else from the planning commission want to speak?
Just, uh, uh, kind of circle back to the zoning ordinance thing. If we were to, if we consider kind of codifying this criteria by putting it in the zoning ordinance, could it be reevaluated through a variance process like other zoning criteria? I mean, if.
The variance process under state code is very specific, and it's tied to hardship criteria, which would, in my opinion, not be able to be met in this situation with these uses. You know, hardship means that you are denied any economic value for the use of the land, which is just simply not going to be the case. So it's, it, it would be something that I would classify more as a convenience. So you, you could apply for a variance, but I would strongly recommend that the BZA not approve such variances, because it wouldn't meet the state code criteria.
It would be the same difference as any zoning criteria, basically.
Yeah, yeah, but when you're, when you're talking about a, you know, when you're talking about a setback for a house or something like that, and if you don't approve a variance to that setback, you can't build the house, that's a hardship. If you can't get a variance to the setback because you can't put your pool where you want it, that, that is not hardship, it's an inconvenience. And so with this use, and, and, and subjecting it kind of to a, an SUP discretionary process to begin with, I don't think the variance criteria would hold up at all. And I wouldn't recommend building any other kind of outlet either. I mean, if you're going to put it in the zoning ordinance, it should be a regulation that you stand by. If you're going to grant exceptions all the time, what's the point? That's just my opinion.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you, when you, when you establish a zoning ordinance, you want to do it so that it's in a well-thought-out, methodical manner through a discussion like this. There isn't anything arbitrary about it. It's, it's, it's been thought about, it's implementing the vision of the conference plan, and then you stand by it and don't undermine it. So I think what I would propose, um, you know, in the interest of making progress, is that we go through down each of these items. We're not making any decisions per se, but we're taking maybe a straw poll of how we feel about each of these items, and then when we get to the end, we'll, we'll kind of see where we're at. Can we do that, Mr. Chairman's?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's start with utility scale solar facilities as a use. They're currently permitted as a use, uh, they're encouraged in the comprehensive plan, and they're enabled by Article twenty-three, I believe it is, of the zoning ordinance. For utility scale solar facilities, do we want to currently continue permitting them? Which means we would keep language in the comp plan to do that. So if you want to continue allowing utility scale solar in the county, I'd just ask you to raise your hand.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Raise your hand if you do want to continue allowing it as a use. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, the planning. You do not want to continue allowing it as a use.
We're, we're waiting on it.
Okay.
We're going to let the planning commission.
You're going to, okay, so. Planning commission says, uh, six oh, yes, right? Get that right? All right, the distance between the facilities is currently one point five miles, and that is in the comprehensive plan. So who is in support of keeping that distance criteria in the comprehensive plan? My next question is going to be, do we keep it at one point five, or do we change it? But who is interested in keeping it in the comprehensive plan? All right, so, is keeping it in the comprehensive plan?
Nah.
No?
I don't want it anywhere, no.
Okay, so five to one. No distance requirement, or keep the distance requirement, all right? So distance from municipal boundary is currently in the comp plan, it's currently one mile. It's in the comprehensive plan. We can talk about that one mile, we can talk about moving to zoning ordinance, but just keeping that in the comprehensive plan, who's in favor of doing that? So five, five one, one saying, don't want that standard at all. Okay. So back to the, the other part of the public hearing. Well, let me, let me, let's talk about this. So the distance between facilities at one point five miles. Who, who would like to see that change? Raise your hand, whether it's up or down, or sideways. Who would like to see that change? Anybody?
Well, I, I want it changed to lower.
Right, you don't want it at all.
Right, I don't want it at all, or, or lower.
So let me ask you again. Who wants to keep it at one and a half miles? Okay, so, good, okay, so five to one.
Yeah, yeah, sir, and all of what you're doing, you're not paying me any attention.
He's on the, he's on the planning commission.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I, you absolutely are. So you, do you want to see it as a use?
If I do anything, it would be to five miles or more.
Okay, so you want to keep everything that's in the comp plan, but you'd like to see it move, uh, to distance between facilities, five miles minimum?
That would be mine, yes.
Right, okay. Okay, distance from a municipal boundary, uh, who would like to see that stay at one mile? Okay, so five to two, who would like to see?
Did you count, Mr. King?
Do you want to see it increased?
I would like to see it increased.
Okay. Do you have a number in mind?
As of yet, no, I don't.
Okay, but greater than a mile? Okay. Okay. Uh, in terms of the zoning ordinance, uh, do we want to see the distance between facilities put in the zoning ordinance? Who wants to see that? So it's one, it would be based on the straw poll, it would be, it would stay in the comp plan, it would be, uh, one and a half miles apart. Who wants to see that emulated in the zoning ordinance?
I would like to see it in the zoning side.
Okay, whatever the number ends up being, you want it in the zoning.
In the zoning side.
Okay, and, so, one, so two, so no, 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 right? Okay.
Right.
All right. All right, so I have that in a no, five to two, is that right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. With the distance between a municipal boundary, uh, who would like to see that in the zoning ordinance? Nobody? The distance from municipal boundary is one mile. Whether it stays one, which the indication is that it would, or it changes. Nobody wants to see that in the zoning ordinance, is that right?
I don't know.
You do?
The only.
Okay.
I, I, I guess most of the things we have seen has been located from, from the municipality of, I guess the city of M4 you were talking about?
Uh, it would be, uh, any city or town boundary.
Right, okay, yeah. So we haven't been actually faced with a lot of that at the municipality position.
Okay, and that is true, my response to that would be, you know, you potentially could be faced with it. So in that case, is the, keeping it in the comprehensive plan sufficient? Or would you want to see it in the zoning ordinance?
I can keep it like that, I believe.
Okay, so I'm, I'm seeing six to one, uh, no, for moving it into the. Aaron, you're keeping notes for me, right? Keep me straight here. It's hard facilitating and taking notes at the same time. Um, okay, in terms of the, uh, changing the minimum size of the facility from, uh, I believe it's currently at one acre, it might be two, but I think it's at one. But changing it to five, that was what was proposed. Who is in favor of changing it, changing the minimum to five?
That's megawatt, not.
Five megawatt, not acre, thank you.
And give me the acres again, I know you gave.
Uh, we say, in, in Virginia, it, you have about ten acres per megawatt. It can go down to as low as seven and a half to eight, but that's on an ideal, perfectly flat site. So the rule of thumb is, is about ten acres. So you'd be talking about, uh, if you increased it from where it's at, say at one, uh, it could be a ten-acre site, you wouldn't see any that were below fifty, forty-five, fifty-acre sites.
I, I, I personally do not want to see any solar farm in Greensville County at fifty acres or less, and I don't, I, I would never.
Okay, so you.
I want to see a lot more than that.
If you're going to see them, you want to see them bigger.
Much bigger.
Okay, all right. So who else would be, who else is interested in changing that, raising that from where it is to five? I'm seeing none. So you like, you like the minimum where it's at?
What's the minimum?
One.
Yeah, I think the minimum is one, yeah. So that means that community scale solar would be permitted, and if it were approved, there would be no revenue stream coming out of that, which is not the planning commission's issue, or issues of land use. But it is a board issue, potentially, and it could be handled on an individual basis, site by site. Okay, so no, and that was six to one, right? Yes, okay. All right, uh, what about the acreage changing and being less than a thousand with a max of seventy-five percent? Anybody interested in, in that? Let me remind myself of, of that metric.
When all these first started coming to us about three years ago, uh, size was an issue. And, and, um, and, and I think there's still, there's nothing wrong with having some parameters. I think it, that's how we came up with this. As a group, I think all of us here tonight decided that.
Now, the size is currently in the comp plan too. And that's what I wanted to remind myself of as well. So the size in the comp plan said two acres, uh, less than a thousand acres, no more than seventy-five percent. So what the proposal is, is to move that to the zoning ordinance and have it be between five and a thousand, or no more than, you know, up to a thousand.
The way you're getting five from, our paperwork only says a thousand. It's kind of less than a thousand, and you come up with five hundred.
Yeah, less than a thousand, yeah, so.
Less than a thousand could be nine hundred ninety-nine.
Right, 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 right. But to me, the point is, is that that's another, that's another. Right, 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 right. But to me, the point is, is that that's another, that's another comp plan versus zoning ordinance issue that we really haven't talked about. It was proposed to be removed, or... It was proposed to be added into zoning ordinance, but it's currently in the comp plan. So, is, and, and the, and the, and, we've already said that there's no desire to move it from, I guess it's two, to, to a thousand, to, less than a thousand, to nine hundred ninety-nine point nine. So, who would like to see that metric be emulated in the zoning ordinance as well as the comp plan? I'm seeing nobody.
I'm going to say, I would like to see...
Yes, you would like to see that. So, that's no, six to one. All right, and then we've talked about locating within one mile of transmission lines, and y'all said that you did not want to move it, right? And that was, you know, we haven't talked about that yet. So, that's another one that was proposed to move from the comp plan to the zoning ordinance. So, let's talk about, do we want to, do we want to put it in the, in the zoning ordinance as well as in the comp plan? Anybody yes to that?
I'm going to say yes to the zoning.
Yes, okay. Anybody else yes to that? Yes, yes. Okay, all right. So, that is, um, a no, four to three. And then the other issue is, um, with it being in the comp plan, do we want it to still stay within a mile? Or, or should it be less, or should it be moved it off? Are we happy with one mile? Who's happy with one mile? Okay, five to two, you'd like to see it stricter?
I would abstain on that right now.
Okay, so, that one's five, one, one. Because you'd rather not see it at all. Yeah, okay. Um, and then I think we've talked about the separation from facilities. Uh, that was a no, five to one, and leave it in the comp plan and leave it at one and a half. So, we've already answered that one. So, I think, uh, where we're at... And correct me if I'm wrong. There's a whole lot more moving parts when you're standing up here trying to do this in your head than it is when you're home in your living room preparing for it.
No, no pressure, no pressure.
I think we'll boot where we start.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we are at a majority vote of the planning commission on line-by-line item issues on every single one of the things we discussed, to leave it as it is.
And during last, at our last planning commission meeting, we, we kind of went round and round, and really never resolved anything.
Okay.
So, it was, it was more of a debate.
Okay.
And, and, and discussion.
For better or for worse, I think we just resolved some things.
I agree.
On the planning commission end.
We worked on it pretty hard about two years ago.
We did.
We did.
A lot of blood, sweat, and tears.
We did. Um, okay, all right. So, is there anything about that that the board would like to talk about or weigh in on? Or are y'all happy with the discussion at this point?
I, I don't have anything to add to it. It has time.
Neither do I, it is time.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, what I would say is, uh, since we've had such a productive conversation, and it all does fall within the realm of what was considered at the April thirteenth public hearing, uh, which was duly recorded and noted, all of the comments from the public, uh, on all sides of the issue. Most planning commissioners weighed in, all listened. Um, if you wanted to take an action tonight and make a recommendation, um, based on the input from that public hearing and what was proposed to you that evening, it would be within your purview to do that this evening. If you did do that, then you're done for now, and it goes to the board for them to take your recommendation, schedule their public hearing, hear people speak all over again, and then they would weigh in at that time, or whether they agreed with your recommendation, or whether there were some of these modifications that they would like to see made. So, Mr. Chairman, all is in your court.
Any further discussion on this? We've all heard it, we've listened to it. Can I have a recommendation from the planning commission that we can vote on to pass on to the supervisors concerning these topics right here?
I, I think I'm reading this correctly. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend making no changes to the zoning ordinance pertaining to utility scale solar developments.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor to leave it, to not, put this in the zoning ordinance. And a second, any discussion on that? I, I hope we can get rid of this one day.
Me, too.
Any more discussion from the planning commission members? Have it, you, Mr. Kane?
No.
Okay. Even though, I assume you're ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Motion is passed.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that was six to one, or is that, was there?
It was five, five to one. I did not vote.
Five, one, one.
Five, one.
You did not vote.
I did not.
So, five, one, one.
Yes.
Five affirmatives to the motion?
Yes.
To, that there are no changes to the zoning ordinance, one against and one abstain.
Right.
All right? And then I guess for posterity's sake, should we have a correlating motion with regard to the comprehensive plan amendments that were proposed? I think technically, they were proposing to delete things from the comp plan and add them into the zoning ordinance. So, I, I think from the discussion we had tonight, uh, we also decided that there would be no changes to the comprehensive plan at this time. Is that correct?
And do you want me to say that in the form of a motion?
I, I think just so that we're crystal clear on everything, and that would be a good thing.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we make no changes to the comp plan with regard to, uh, utility scale solar developments.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, and I have a second. Any further discussion on that? Here, none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of Mr. Robinson's motion, say aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
The motion is carried.
And sir, is that also five, one, one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Triva, did you get all that? All right, so the next steps is not the planning commission public hearing. The planning commission just got it off their plate. Uh, the next step would be a board of supervisors' public hearing to be scheduled at the time of your choosing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, coordinate that with Triva and, and, uh, this recommendation, these series of recommendations will be forwarded to you at that time with the staff reports that were part of that public hearing as well. Um, is there anything else that y'all would like to achieve this evening? Anything else I can do for you while I'm here?
I can.
Can, can we, as Virginians, can we all say go Hoos? Beat Mississippi State?
I guess, I guess the hokeys can say that.
I'm a hokey, but...
Hokey say that.
Oh, yeah, we got to root for the state.
I'm a hokey, but, come on.
They're playing now, aren't they?
I think so. If there's no further business, can I have a motion that the planning commission adjourned?
Some move.
Is there a second to that? Somebody's right. We all adjourned, Dan, thank you.
A good motion that board supervisors adjourned?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all for your time.